All right, we will call the meeting to order please with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lumberg.
Ollie.
Yes.
Ody.
Yes, Axler.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
All right, with that I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests this evening. Takes us to approval of the minutes from February 10th and February 24th. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented please. There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Do we have anyone who would like to give any community input this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will keep moving on. Financial items, bills and claims, Mr. Lumberg.
Entertaining questions anybody had on the invoice listing? I just had one noted for public comment. The total of $2,022,000, I think total bills, half of that was a payment for Pesca's Construction for the Berkman Elementary Project, payment number six of $1,032,000. That's the only one I had noted. Page 10. As I said, I believe the total was $2,022,000. Yes. Advanced payments breakdown of $8,550. $93,672 of pay vouchers for the month of March. And $181,000 of food service bills. Be happy to answer any specific questions you guys had on individual bills.
You said that was payment six for the new school, how many payments?
Uh, that total of $5.5 million to date then. Twenty-three million dollar total project costs.
There'll be a lot more payments.
Yes.
Any questions on the bills and claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next, we have the financial report.
Okay. Cash report for the month of February showed $33,279,000 coming into the month. $5,190,000 of receipts. $5,830,000 of dispersments. Left $32.6 million at the end of February. $8.8 million was in the general fund. $2.6 million in the capital outlay fund. $425,000 in the special edge fund. $65,000 in the bond redemption fund. $82,000 in the enterprise fund. And $20.6 million in the projects fund. The $5,190,000 is itemized on the next two pages. Following that is an investment report of $28,252,529. Payroll report for the month of February showed just a little over $3 million total payroll as opposed to our normal monthly payroll at the Brandon Valley School District for this year. It's 2.9, this was a five-week pay period, so that bumped it up for this timeframe. Financial reports, starting off, the revenue. We're two-thirds of the fiscal year are complete. Don't have any concerns of revenue. You can see on the first page, 61.64% of the general fund revenues are in. I did highlight a couple items. I don't know if they showed up, yeah, they did show up on your report as highlighted. Two revenue sources, the state apportionment and the bank franchise tax have come in considerably higher than budget. That bank franchise tax is a very volatile thing. If you remember last year, it came in $150,000, $75,000 under budget. This year it popped up a half a million dollars over budget. Now that has become part of the state aid formula. We'll talk a little bit more about that later in the meeting, but so that's not just extra money there, it becomes part of the formula that's calculated into it later in two years' hands. So we'll, I'll talk about that more later, but I did want to point those two things out, that it provides an influx of revenue that we have to manage in years to come. Under the expenditures, general fund is showing 65.16% expended year-to-date. I would estimate the general fund to be a half to three-quarters of a percent under budget for the year, based on where we're trending right now. Capital outlay fund shows 70.5% expended. That'll be 100% at the end of the year. Special education fund is at 60.8%. So it is continuing to trend under budget, but I did want to note that I've supplemented the special education budget every year for the past three years, so I'm not counting my chickens quite yet in the special ed. Lot of delayed bills are issued in that fund and be cognizant of that fact. Bond redemption fund, 97% expended. Food service fund shows a fully accrued loss year-to-date of $234,000. There's a budgeted loss of $299,000. Trust and agency statement showed $266,000 of amounts held for others. Lastly, the Berkman Valley Elementary Project financial statement through February. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Lumberg.
Thanks.
General business, administration reports, administrative center, Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Berkman Valley Elementary School, progress continues. Would point everyone to that respective Berkman Valley Elementary website for updated photos and images of the project. Would just note that the gymnasium, like I've stated before, pre-cast construction is all up. That roof is decked and it also has rubber membrane on it. The transportation facility, all of the pre-cast is up. They're in the process of roofing that as we speak. In terms of foundation work, they continue to move. In terms of foundation work, in and around the actual school site, masons are on-site. There's some masonry work going on as well as all of the underground utility items. So at this exact point in time, I'd say there's no change to the schedule. We anticipate being open in the fall of 2026 for the '26-'27 school year. The one item I would note related to Berkman Valley Elementary is Sunshine Avenue and the construction of that street to the west of Berkman Valley Elementary. We'll open bids tomorrow, so look forward to getting those bids and then we'll bring that bid forward to the Board of Education at our next meeting in March. Legislative session continues. I think things are fast and furious right now. This is the last week of that regular, of the regular session, I guess, is what I would note. Key topics continue to be funding as well as local control. There's a number of, a number of things flying out there that may have detrimental impact in both of those respective areas. There's things associated with requiring votes on specific times and dates and whatnot, as well as some things associated with not just general fund, but also with capital outlay fund associated with property tax relief, et cetera. So we continue to lobby for those two respective items and fight the good fight for our public schools in the state of South Dakota. FY '26 budget process over, you guys have been, you guys have seen this here for the last few months. So we are really into the phase of looking at the five-year plan. We'll be getting, we'll be bringing forward new staffing positions for next year at our next meeting. The preliminary capital outlay budget is being approved here at this meeting, and again, I want to remind everyone that that is preliminary and the work done associated with that is associated with those big projects that have to be bid. And then we can determine whether or not we're able to do everything in that preliminary budget, or whether or not we have to prioritize with the available resources that we have left available. Middle school classroom addition, would just note that those, the plans are out there. We will open bids on March 20th, review those respective bids, and then we will be bringing forward a recommendation to you on March 24th. There are a few impactful road construction projects going on within the Brandon Valley School District. One item I would note is the Veterans Parkway, Arrowhead Parkway intersection was slated here to start this spring. Originally, we kind of thought that we were going to be seeing that start in May, but due to weather and some of those things, they appear to be getting a little bit more of a jump on it than originally anticipated. So it's important to note that traffic will be closed at that intersection eastbound. There will be some impact to us in terms of routing and those respective items, but it's not going to be terribly impactful. I would note that there will be temporary traffic controls that will be placed up and around their respective detour. So, South Dakota Highway 11 and Madison will receive a temporary traffic signal at some point in time, just straight south of Brandon. And then also Six Mile Road in Madison will also receive a temporary traffic control. So those are in the process of being constructed as we, as we speak. Highway 42 Bridge, I guess all I would note on that is that's delayed. To exactly what extent and exactly when, I think they're still working through those respective details, but that aspect of what we've been working with will be delayed. Negotiations, timeline and wage recommendation for you to know and understand, here on March 17th, we will have our pre-meeting with the Brandon Valley Education Association. The Board of Education will meet in executive session on March 24th for negotiation preparations. And then the Personnel Welfare Committee will meet with the Brandon Valley Education Association on March 26th to engage in contract negotiations. I would note that we have additional dates necessary, scheduled if necessary, and things don't get completed on the 26th. In the event that negotiations are completed, on April 14th, we will ratify our master contract, and then we'll also look to approve classified wage recommendations, administrative salary recommendations, superintendent contract. In terms of our academic calendar, it is parent-teacher conferences this evening in the Brandon Valley School District, at the intermediate school and the middle school. Tomorrow night, we have parent-teacher conferences at our elementary buildings, as well as at the high school. There will be no school on March 13th, and then no school on the 14th. In April, we have spring break. On the 17th, we have a two-hour early dismissal, and on the 18th and the 21st, there is no school. Two other items that I would note, the Brandon Valley School District Teacher of the Year Award is out there, and I would encourage our families and patrons to consider nominating an individual for Teacher of the Year. And then also, I want to just let everyone know that we have our first-ever Classified Employee of the Year Award that we will be granting this year. I would say thank you to Ace Hardware here in Brandon for sponsoring that respective award. Would note that those respective applications, I have brought a few, and they are on the back table there, if anyone would like to grab one on their way out the door. But we will be working through that nomination process, and then once all of those nominations are received, we work through a committee process. Myself and Mr. Lumberg serve, as well as President Ollie, and then we have a number of other citizens on that, on that committee that make those respective selections, and they will be selecting the Teacher of the Year, as well as the Classified Employee of the Year. With that, would certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lumberg, anything additional? All right, high school, anyone? Nope. Middle school, I anticipate they're a little busy, same with intermediate school. Anyone from special services? Any of the elementaries? No takers. Mrs. Nelson, anything? Mr. Henchel? Mr. Farquhar? Oh, finally. I got one.
Just kind of a quick update, both the boys and girls basketball teams have qualified for the state tournament, so the girls will be leaving this Wednesday to head out to Rapid City, and then the boys next week. We've wound down our winter season. Last, last weekend, I was out in Rapid City for the boys wrestling and the girls wrestling as well. We had five student athletes get on the podium for the wrestling. Navarro Shonky was the state champion, Brendan Omi was runner-up, and then we had two fourth-place finishes with Levi Vescrana and Mason Schumacher, and then Kendall Clayton was our girl representative on the podium with a fourth-place finish as well. So we have a lot of things going on there. We have a lot of band activities right now. There's a concert probably every day in the PAC for the next couple, couple weeks, and then the musical will be coming towards the end of April. So we have a lot of things going that way, and first track meet is next Monday for the indoor season. So here we go. Next season is ready to start with all that. So if I have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, no board policy tonight, so that takes us to our first item under general business, presentation of the Brandon Valley School District five-year plan. There will be no action on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I turn it over to Mr. Lumberg, I just want to thank our administration for their work associated with the five-year plan, and then also Mr. Lumberg's office. Tremendous amount of time and effort and energy goes into the creation of this respective document. Naturally, there are always more wants and needs than available resources, and we're required to prioritize those respective items and make difficult decisions, but generally speaking, this process has been very, very impactful to the planning of the Brandon Valley School District. And specifically, when we take a look at our financial situation, not only today, but moving forward. So, Mr. Lumberg, with that, I'll do my best to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. As I tell you every year, probably one of the more important documents is you as a Board of Education review and approve over the time, even more so important than the annual budget, because this is planning out over a five-year period, determining how things you do today affect things down the road. So it's a very, very important document, I believe. The document is, in my summary section, is broken out into four parts, capital outlay, general fund, and special education, and enrollment. I'll touch on each of those items as we go through this, this presentation. The first one, the capital outlay fund, that's our major equipment and building needs fund. Each year, we have a certain number of purchases that we almost have to do. We textbook adoptions, buses, technology that we do every year, and those are listed in red on the, on the document. And then I end up with a dollar amount that we're able to take care of for other needs, facility needs, repairs and maintenance, deferred maintenance, all of those types of items. You can see over the five-year plan period, we generally have $1.2 to $1.5 million available for those other needs, which is a good number that we've been comfortable with in the, in the years past. We get too much higher than that, it becomes very difficult to manage. I just don't have enough time in the day to manage those projects. All take people and, and time to, to get completed, so it's, I'm very comfortable with the number of 1.2 to 1.5 throughout the, the period of the five years. The fund itself is 100% funded revenue from property tax. Everything we get out of that fund is from property taxes. In the past, we've issued very minimal debt in that fund. It has allowed us to do something this year that we haven't done in basically the history of the, of the fund since I've been here anyhow. We're able to pay for a $30 million elementary school and an $8 million middle school addition through the issuance of capital outlay debt. No difference in your taxes or anything there, it's the same as it was last year. Those debt numbers are reflected in the capital outlay budget. You can see everything works throughout the five-year plan with those numbers. We have not issued any debt on the middle school project. We're waiting to open those bids and see what, how they come out. We have issued the debt on the Berkman Valley Elementary School. That's in there next year at 2.4 million. Also in the plan, you'll notice that we have continued to try to put some money aside for capital proj, major capital projects by using cash. We've done that quite a bit throughout my tenure here. It's been a very good way to get things done in the Brandon Valley School District. As you remember, when Superintendent Larson presented the plan for the middle school addition, he also had a phase two of that plan. That phase two was more middle school additions, renovation to the PAC, and athletic complex additions of $10 million. That $10 million is highlighted in yellow at the end of the five-year period there, $5.3 million one year and $4.7 million the following year. We're able to do that strictly with cash, putting away a few dollars each, each year to allow us to, to manage that project in three or four more years. This fund, this year has been subjected to some tough legislation, as you've heard Jared and Ellie talk previously about. There's a plan to limit the property tax growth, to not even let us have the growth, the new construction growth, which I just can't understand personally how that could be a wise way to decrease property taxes, that you just don't tax new construction. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but it's working its way through the system. I don't know what's going to happen to it. I've tried to put into the projections, the worst-case scenario, so we'll see what, what happens there. You can see on the revenue side of things, though, a lot less revenue each year, new revenue in the capital outlay fund than we've been accustomed to seeing in prior years. That fund would go up $300,000, $400,000 a year, just on growth, new construction growth. And we're showing a $100,000 increase each year, the worst-case scenario. We'll see what happens in the end. There's still, everything that Jared gets called about, they're still muddling through it, I guess I'll say. Also in this year's budget, '25-'26 in the capital outlay fund, a lot of technology, $2.4 million of technology. We're turning over the one-to-one computers in the high school, which is a big portion of it, $1.4 million, and then a number of other additional projects in technology, replacement projects and so on and so forth. So $2.4 million total in technology. Any questions on the capital outlay fund? With the, being subjected to tough legislation, I'm very happy that it's still, we're able to meet our needs and our, our goals of getting, as Jared pointed out, the $10 million from down the road. Takes a little bit longer when you're not recouping $300,000, $400,000 a year in additional revenue, but maybe it won't pass and we'll be in a better shape than this report. The second section is the general fund. The general fund is the major operating fund of the district, the largest fund. I can show you on the spreadsheet that's up on the board, I take the revenue from the current year, and that plugs up to the next year, the beginning revenue, and then we add increases and decreases throughout the years. This year, '25, '24, '25, you'll see a line item, an increase from additional student enrollment. Remember, enrollment came in at 115 versus a projection of 65, which is a lot different from the previous two years. So we had a $400,000 windfall of revenue with 50 additional kids, as opposed to budget this year. That's what that $385,000 is. And then those numbers just carry through. Same with the expenditures, last year's ending becomes next year's beginning, and then the pluses and minuses throughout the year. Revenue growth in this fund, as we've talked about many times, is a component of the number of students that we have each year. We're projecting an increase of 90 kids next year in our budget. These numbers have gone down from, some of you guys have been on the board for a long time. I mean, they showed revenue increase, or enrollment increases of 150, 200 kids for a long time there. And this one's showing 90 next year and maybe 75 a year for the next five years. The enrollment growth percentage has gone down. There's no question about that. But it's still going in the right direction. As I've mentioned earlier on that other revenue situation, it's been very volatile. Last year, we were down $175,000. This year, we're up half a million, $600,000 in the other revenue. That's not a problem, other than the fact that it becomes a issue when we're trying to manage the budget each year, because that money gets dumped into the reserves or fund balance, and then we have to budget the fund balance throughout those years to make everything work. What we, '25-'26 school year is the budget we're working on right now, we're, the number that goes in there for the other revenues is the number from '23-'24. The number from '23-'24 was down $175,000, because bank franchise tax was down last year. So that number's being plugged into the '25-'26 school year budget, which gives us a windfall money. In two more years, the new number, which shows it will be $500,000 over, that number gets plugged in there. So you kind of follow where I'm going with that? That it becomes the management of the, of the fund bal. Supposed to say yes. That means I'm doing a crappy job of explaining this. It's, it's goofy and it gets complex. I, I give you that and stuff, but it's, it just boils down to the management of that fund balance. It's there for a reason, and we have to manage that as the administration throughout the years, each, each period there. So that's...
Yes, sir. Paul, quick question. The variability in the enrollment going down to 15 and back up to 175, is that just for a reason?
I think it kind of plays in with the high school graduation class versus the kindergarten class coming in throughout the year. In the enrollment number, and we'll talk about this more when I get to that section, but we just went through kindergarten screening and screened 340 individuals, which last year at the same time, we screened 333 individuals, and ended up with 376. So I'm comfortable, 340 this year, and I can predict it, 380. So it's right in the, in the ballpark. If last year's anything like this year, who knows? But I'm, I'm comfortable with it, and I think the 90 is a, is a good number. We're having some built-in growth in the middle school, just by classes coming in and whatnot. Very limited growth in the elementary that we have in the projections, but we'll see how that pans out. Yeah, I'll talk more about that when we get to the enrollment part of it. Three key areas of increases are salaries, benefits, and new staff, as they always are every year. 86% of our budget is people, salaries and benefits for people. As always, we try to do our best with all three of those categories, depending on how the revenues come in. Each one of them is very important, as we all know, and we try to do our very best to fund all three of them at the maximum level we're able to. The fund balance management is... The fund balance management is seen throughout the five-year period and some of those large deficits in years three and four, that's when we're utilizing those other revenues that are going to be up. We utilize, utilize that money that's being dumped into the fund balance to fund the current year budget in those years. So that's the, the case of utilizing the fund balance in our, in our budget for the current year. All plays out pretty well throughout the five-year period. Projecting increases in state aid of 1% to 2% to 3% each of the years. It's going to slow down, folks. I mean, state isn't flush with money like they were in the COVID years by any stretch of imagination, so the state increases, aid increases are going to be tough in the next few years. We'll continue to try to be the leaders that we have in, in everything that we do. And I think the staffing requests going out throughout that five-year period are very generous and, and never enough. I mean, he comes down to my office all the time, "Really?", and I reply, "Really? You're complaining that I just got this high number in there, I'm all proud of it and stuff?" But yeah, it's, it's never enough. But it's, continues to make us a leader. One other item that I'll note in 26, 27, that becomes a key item when you put on new buildings, I mean, you have a certain amount of built-in expenses when you have those new buildings, and it's going to mount to $450,000 just to put heat, lights, and custodians in that new building out Berkman Valley Elementary. What else can I tell you about the general fund? Any questions or... If not, we're going to the special education fund. Special education fund is similar to the general fund, as it's driven by student count and per student allocations. Next year, 25, 26, we had, are going to be assisted, pull out another piece of paper here, assisted by our fall enrollment count, December of 2024. It goes up to about 840, I believe it is, but the categories that those kids are being identified in jumped up pretty good in the high-dollar categories. I have noted on my spreadsheets here, we went up from 39 kids in the multiple disabilities to 51 kids, plus 12, at $37,000 a kid. 450,000 bucks. Autism kids, we went from 87 to 96. Those kids are valued at $16,760. It's another $150,000. So therefore, you can see the number in 25, 26, additional funding from student enrollment increase, that's not really a student, I mean, it's the, where the kids are coded into the, into the funding formula. It's an increase, but it just depends on how, where they're coded. So that's going to help out the, the fund a little bit in that thing. Still, our issues become with the fund balance in the special education fund, that's dropped down considerably, what, almost dangerously low. That's why we've implemented some procedures here or some recommendations to limit the increase in our expenditures in the special education fund, try the best we can. And over the five-year period, we, you see that we start to slowly get that fund balance, slowly get that fund balance up to where we are board mandated, or Board of Education goal to have our fund balance at 15%. Doesn't get there, but it's slowly going in the right direction, I hope. And you can see we have expense reductions in next year of 100 and the following year 50,000 in the special education fund. Try to do the best we can to accomplish those. It's not a guaranteed number at this point, but we'll see what happens. It's encouraging that those fund balance numbers are slowly getting back up there in the special education fund. Questions? As I said, our goal is to get back to the Board of Education-related goal of having 15% fund balance in there, try to get us through the, the tough years when, you know, you see an increase in the special needs population that jettisons on you and it just makes it palatable for us to get through those ebbs and flows of financial management. Lastly, is the enrollment projections? As I said earlier, we're projecting 90 new students next year and about roughly 75 a year, each year thereafter. We do a progression, a grade progression model in grades one through 12, which is the current enrollment plus a percentage increase. I've really dropped that back in the elementaries just because of the trend that we've been seeing the last few years, we're not seeing the growth within the current elementaries that we have in the past. You know, the, the enrollment might be at 400 kids in the elementary. In the past, we'd see that go to 420. We're just not seeing that growth right in the last few years, so we scaled that way back to about under a 2% growth, 1% to 2% growth in those, in those grade levels. Then we start to see some growth in the intermediate school generally, and in the middle school, high school is, runs pretty even keel level, just based on the current enrollments. When we look at the high school and, and the enrollment charts, I'm very, I don't know if the word's excited, maybe for a nerd like me, it's exciting, but the high school holds 2,000 kids as it currently sits, and you can see over this five-year period, projection, the maximum projection over that period is 1,600 kids in the high school, currently at 1384. So our needs at the high school level are taken care of, folks, and that's a very, very good feeling. Should be for everybody.
So, so we don't need another high school?
Correct.
Thank you.
Turn your mic on.
Thank you.
He said we don't need another high school.
No.
No, I mean, throughout the five-year period, that's at 1,600 kids maximum there, so in our grades, you know, some of those elementary classes, we have 425, 450, but we're sitting pretty good in our capacities, opening a new elementary in 26, that'll take pressure off of Fred Assam Elementary, or I mean, Robert Bennett's Elementary. A lot of those kids will go to the new school. I think we're sitting, place ourselves in a very good position to accommodate additional students in our current... You know, we talk about the growth not being as high as it has in the past, and I whine about it, and, and, and folks, it's a pretty good position. I mean, everybody else in the state of South Dakota would be, it's so envious to see 90 kid enrollment growth next year, 75 projected for the next four years. Any school in the state of South Dakota would be very envious of that position. It's lower than we've been accustomed to, but, uh, so I can whine if I want to, but it's still a very good position. And we're well-positioned with respect to the facilities, as I said, with the new school opening in 26. We should be in good, good condition. Questions on enrollment?
With the enrollment, the special ed enrollment, are the child count, as you...
Yeah.
Put it, 44, you know, those are, is that considering the 90 or is that separate?
No, that's within the, the 90. It's just, it's, it's hard to estimate what that populate, this is based on history, that that population shows that we should go up 40 to 50 kids every year in child count with special ed. If you have regular ed growth, you're going to have special education ed growth, just goes hand in hand, so that 40 to 50 is more based on history than anything.
Sure, sure. Thanks. Paul, you talked about the potential variability or unsureness of revenue sources that we're talking about legislative and otherwise, and that our current target for fund balance being 15%. Is there ever an argument or something in your view that would change your mind and say we should be more conservative and increase that target so we have a bigger buffer or not so much? Sorry, thank you.
Personally, my answer to that is no. A lot of people would tell you to, the answer to that is yes, but I, I just feel very comfortable in the 15% range and I, the old mantra that I keep repeating to Dr. Larson is, people don't pay their property taxes for, have he and I put it in the bank at 2% interest. You know, they want to see the results of the payment of property taxes. So I, I don't feel real comfortable getting any higher. Some of these things we're being forced into, though, because it's, it's just flopping the other revenues and it, it's not, they're not windfalls, is kind of the point that I wanted to get across to you guys, that those are not windfalls, they're just being dumped into the fund balance for us to utilize down the line when the funding formula injects those new numbers into it. We'll be, the word isn't penalized, but we'll be accommodated with those increases in other revenues in two years. So we have to remember that and be prepared for that.
Is there a situation or thing on the horizon you might see that might make that change for you or not? You feel pretty good at 15?
I don't, I don't see it.
Thank you.
It's hard for them to get those numbers in a timely basis. Some of those numbers don't come in until June 30th, so they just, it's just quirks of the formula that, that happen and remember the years when we incurred all those increases? That was, those were windfalls. It wasn't in the formula. Those were actual windfalls then, so not there anymore. Other questions? Thank you. Like I, I did, I mentioned our kindergarten, and I went back and found these, I operate on posted notes, I find posted notes from three years ago or whatever, but no, last year we screened 333, this year we screened 341, last year we ended up with 376 kids. I'm planning on 380 this year, so if it pans out, we're right there. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Special Education Fund Executive Committee Report and Recommendations, again, no action.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, just want to take an opportunity to, to thank those members of the group that worked through this incredibly difficult and challenging process. Anytime you're put into a situation where you have to carefully evaluate expenditures and try to find efficiencies and reduce costs in areas that seem to be elevated, there is most certainly a significant amount of challenge that goes with that. Lot of very, very thoughtful and challenging conversations held at the, at the table, but do really appreciate all the individuals that were participants in the Special Education Fund Executive Review Committee. So just before I, before I begin, I guess I would just note a little bit of the overview in terms of where we, where we were. So here in July, when we originally brought forward our FY '25 budget, we had about a half a million dollar special education fund deficit. Would note that when, when that occurred, we also made decisions throughout the, throughout the fall to try and do what we could to decrease that respective deficit. So there were a number of decisions made and we ended up with a deficit or what is a budgeted deficit of about $330,000. One item I would note is we did not hire a speech-language pathologist for the district for this year, and then in addition to that, we utilized district nurse care for one-on-one care. The estimated special education fund balance for the end of FY '25, or this June, is approximately $700,000. Mr. Lundberg had just gone through that five-year plan noting that 15% fund balance is your target, your strategic plan target in terms of fund balance, and the $700,000 is right out a 6% fund balance. So that is, that is where we were here this fall. Made some, made some decisions and managed a number of things, reducing that respective deficit to 330, leaving you with a fund balance of about 700 at the end of this year, which is a 6% balance. Speaking a little bit to the respective process, the committee membership was made up of two members of the Board of Education, the Brandon Valley Education Association had membership, we had two, our two special education administrators here within the Brandon Valley School District. We had four members of Brandon Valley Administration, building level, so elementary, intermediate, middle school, and high school representation. We had a member from Teach Well Cooperative, and then myself and Mr. Lundberg also served on the respective committee. We spent approximately six months working through, working through our process, we held eight committee meetings, and then in the midst of those eight committee meetings, we also had two subgroup committees that met on two specific areas. One was our early childhood program, and then the other was the transportation program. I would note that we utilized the district budget data and expenditure data, and also the South Dakota Department of Education data when evaluating what areas seem to be elevated and what areas could be targeted. Ultimately, the Special Education Executive Fund Committee, Review Committee landed on a number of items. The first item I would outline is early childhood and administrative structure. So our recommendation is restructure systems related to coordination and delivery of services for the Brandon Valley School District's obligations in birth of three and early, early childhood programs. The related action strategies associated with that recommendation is to transfer the early childhood coordinator to a Brandon Valley School District SLP position. So that increases the number of FTEs within our SLP pool by a 1.0 FTE, incurring no additional cost to the district. Increase assistant sped director to 12, to a 12-month contract. That additional expenditure ultimately will be utilized, either that individual or the director will be utilized to support the early childhood program as we define and clarify administrative roles, responsibility to include the coordination and delivery of birth of three and early childhood programs. In addition to that, we will discontinue screening practices that are not required to be completed by the Brandon Valley School District. And then ultimately, we also want to minimize therapist travel. I would tell you that preliminary, preliminary, again, this is preliminary, my, I would say that the preliminary information would lead me to believe that our new SLP FTE would best serve us if placed at Inspiration Elementary, because that would greatly minimize other therapists' travel and allow us to be more efficient. That decision has not been made, as we are still working through those respective staffing and consideration processes. Transportation, beginning in the fall of 2025, minimize small vehicle routes for efficiency and establish a CDL and non-CDL route differential. The related action strategies is to, to basically combine small vehicle routes into minibus or school bus transit, and then also establish a CDL and non-CDL, CDL route differential. Over the course of the last few years, we've really seen a growth in the number of small vehicle routes with very minimal growth or nearly no growth in the number of new bus routes. So the dependency on the small vehicle routes has led to budgetary issues. So in addition to combining small vehicle routes into minibus and/or bus transit, we are also recommending the establishment of a CDL and non-CDL route differential. So we would have CDL route pay, current CDL route pay is $66... Current CDL route pay is $66.62. And non-CDL route pay would be 90% of that number. We also have bus supervision or bus aides and those respective individuals are paid at 50% route pay. So as we look at this for the, for the long term or into the future, as your CDL route pay goes up, so do those other items. They go, they track right with it and you're not, you're not having to deal with three different numbers. You deal with one number and then the non-CDL route pay and bus supervision ultimately play off of that as well. Student health services. The recommendation of the committee is to reduce reliance on vendor-provided nursing services and leverage med aid support while maintaining appropriate building supervision. Our related action strategies outline hiring an additional FTE for our respective needs. And ultimately what that is, is that's looking to combine multiple vendor-provided nurses into one district-provided nurse, creating less cost and efficiency. We're going to, we look to increase the middle school and the intermediate school secretarial staff by .5 each. Right now, each of those buildings have a full-time secretary and then an individual that goes between those two buildings half-time. By increasing them both to 2.0 or to give them both 2.0, we provide those, those respective supports in terms of additional med aid support. Would also note that in the not-so-distant future, we'll also have an intermediate school south that we are talking about. And by, by making this move, we also create ourselves an opportunity when it comes time to split, we can pull one out and they go directly south. Yep, very good. Hire a 1.0 RBE med aid or additional secretary. That is necessary as we are utilizing that respective FTE for one-on-one nursing services in the AM. And then the PM, they are transitioning to, back to Robert Bennett's Elementary. Training and professional development. Develop and implement a strategic approach to support staff training and professional development with an overall goal to decrease the need for, for referrals and reduce future costs. And it's very, very, very important to note that we are currently doing training items with our special education EAs. What we're talking about here is a more robust systemic approach to training and professional development for all support staff and our EAs within the Brandon Valley School District, general ed as well as special education EA. So it's really 100,000-foot view systemic approach. Think year one, it's, it's the basics. Year two, you build on those basics and with increased skill and knowledge. And then year three is even more advanced than years one and two. Ultimately, looking to decrease the need for referrals, leading to reduced future costs. That is not something that will happen overnight. That is a, that is a big ticket project that will take, I would imagine, all of next year to plan and prepare and look to hopefully be able to implement in 26, 27. But that will be a, that will be a lengthy process as we want it to be of high quality. And then we just noted vendor supports. Utilize contracted services when necessary, appropriate and fiscally responsible. We want to reduce reliance on vendor-provided nursing services and ultimately just utilize them when it is in our best interest. And there are most certainly times where it makes sense to utilize those respective vendor-provided supports. We just want to reduce our reliance on them as they are most certainly more costly than providing it through our in-house, through our in-house staff. There's a number of, a number of specific details and items that are still to be worked out regarding all of, all of the recommendations. But overall, the, the recommendations will come, come to fruition and be formalized here in March and April through the 25, 26 staffing recommendations. And then also the administrative salary recommendation as well as the classified wage recommendation. Madam Chair would certainly defer to Member Bell or yourself, as you served on those respective committees, if you had any comments, but that's all I have. I will certainly entertain any questions that you may have as well.
I just want to say I really appreciate the process. It was, I don't think we've left any stone unturned. We looked, I guess, six months, eight, eight meetings, subcommittees. We looked under lots of different stones, found lots of different data sources. And so it was a very thorough process. So thank you for the administration yourself for leading that process.
And I'll just echo what Mr. Bell said, just, you know, to add that it was not always an easy process. Anyone else, any questions? All right, that takes us to items three through seven. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through 13, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Central office building permit applications for your review if you so choose. There is a thank you there to the Board of Education. With that, does anyone have a formal board report that they would like to share this evening? Everybody's quiet, okay. A couple of travel reports there for your information. That takes us to the end of our scheduled agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And thank you everyone for coming.